2024, and then also Mr. Brian Press will be our Vice Chairman for 2024. So, thank you for your service, Mr. Jowers.
Yes, sir.
Few years, consecutive years, you did a great job. And we had a lot of academic success, and we had a lot of excitement and good things happening. And as Chairman, he won a state championship in football, guys. I'm gonna give him a round of applause. But I told him that earlier, and you know what he said? He said them boys and their coaches won that state championship. So, uh, so thank you, guys, and we'll get all into that in a minute. But, uh, alright.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Alright, everybody's ready? We have a pledge allegiance today by Commander Yerick Arillo and Lieutenant Commander Charles Luth.
Right, left, right, right, left, details. All right. Raise your arms. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms about, face forward, march.
Alright, we appreciate that. And with that, we will call the January the 18th, 2024 Record Meetup Coffee County of Education Order. And our invocation today, Pastor Britt Peavy. Let's see if she's here.
I haven't seen her.
Okay.
Father, thank thee for thy many blessings, keep us from harm, teach us to be true to each other ourselves indeed, Lord, guide and direct us, and we're just so thankful for all of our young people, Lord, and just put a hedge of protection around them and all of our staff, Lord, and keep them safe and healthy. And, Lord, just continue to pour blessings down on Coffee County and our young people and our children and our staff and our whole community, Lord. And we're just thankful to have the opportunity to be here and do the business of the Coffee County School System. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Alright, if I've got a copy of the agenda, if there's something needs to be changed, we'll get motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Hold on a second. All in favor?
Under student academic success, we have our mission and our vision. Our mission, of course, is destination graduation for college career and life. And our vision is to create a stronger community, do an equitable and excellent education for every student. So, we certainly want to keep in mind our mission and our vision as we do the work of the school system here, alright? And I think it's, uh, this next recognition goes right in line with that. Have you produced something? Yes, sir.
We need to amend the agenda to include the supplement.
Alright.
That I could look at.
Alright, yeah, it's not on here? Alright, alright.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Alright, we'll go back and, uh, I'd ask Chairman to amend the agenda.
Back up, and let's see if we can get a, we're adding two to consent agenda. Correct.
We want to establish a separate number?
Or is it just a discussion? Well, not, but, no. Just a discussion.
Yeah, but he wants to talk through.
Yeah, we need a vote. We need a vote on it. So, you could add it as, uh, after, right after consent agenda.
We have a motion to add the Governor supplement as number eight on the agenda and drop everything else down one. I move we accept the amendment. Second. All in favor?
Great, thank you for catching that. Alright, that's pretty important, alright? Uh, and just as point information, so that the viewers who are out there and all of our guests who are here, we discussed that at length in our work session at 5:30, our 5:30 work session, and the way we do that, we roll that over into what we call the consent agenda and have a vote on all those items at one time. And so, somehow that got that thought to consent agenda after we discussed it at 5:30. That's corrected now. Alright, uh, mission and vision, I think it's very relevant to have our state champion Coffee Trojans here tonight, and, uh, we want to recognize with a special recognition our athletic department, our high school, our coaches, and especially our young men that competed on the football field this year. So, at this time, uh, we would ask that Mr. Allen, Coach Coe, uh, and Coach Wyler, y'all will come up and start this recognition.
First of all, it's good to be here. It's, hopefully this is our first of many trips this school year, recognizing champions and the accomplishments of our student athletes, uh, not only a region championship, but first state championship in football in Coffee history. Forty-one years ago, May of 1983, I was part of a state baseball championship, first year. Forty-one years later, I experienced my second. Folks, they're, they don't give these trophies and these titles away. You work for them, and there are many, many good coaches and good players that play their entire career and never win one. We're, I'm in the process of celebrating my second, how proud I am of Trojan Nation for our school, for our community, for the support we've given and what's taking place. I think y'all would all agree, it's been a whole lot of fun. So, I'm going to turn it over next to Coach, our Principal Van Allen, and he's got a word or two about Coach Coe, and then he's going to talk about our players and our coaches.
Thank you, Coach Wyler. I'm not sure with just a brief story, uh, when we hired Coach Coe, he sat right back here in this executive boardroom in the interview, and he looked at us and I, and he said, "If you hire me, I promise I will be a father to the players who don't have one, I'll stand in the gap for them," because that's what my football coach did for me. I grew up without a father, he filled that role, alright? Fast forward two years, state championship winners, uh, the interview after the game was with Fred Brown, our running back, who was the MVP. And the interviewer asked Fred about his coach, and he said, "Coach Coe is always there when you need him, you can count on him." Now, if that's not what a father is, I don't know. So, I give you the state championship 5A coach, Mike Coe.
Appreciate that. Thank you for having us tonight, I won't take long. I want to thank the Board and Dr. Lees. I say this all the time, this is a special place, this is a special place, it's not like this everywhere, I promise you. You guys support us, but more importantly, you support our young people, and it's not just football, it's not just athletics. My daughter, I watched my daughter at the Christmas chorus concert, 150 middle stores in our packed building singing, and it was just amazing. And the place I came from, she wouldn't have that opportunity. So, every kid in our place has an opportunity to chase their dreams and be successful, and that would not happen without you guys and your leadership, Doc. So, I really appreciate that. Another thing I'm very appreciative of is the men behind me, I think they're all here. Coach Hall, who's been here a while, is the best O-line coach in the state of Georgia. He handles all of our, when we have to travel, that jerk can find some good hotels, some good places. You can tell we eat really good, and he's in charge of that. Coach Johnson handles our tight ends, and he's the guy that runs our equipment room. You can't pay him enough to do that, and that's the worst job on a team, and he does a tremendous job. Who else is hiding behind there? I can't see. Who's behind there? Biggest guy in the room hiding, Coach Minshew, who played here, played at Florida State, came back home and did a tremendous job with our defensive line. Coach Morgan, who came over this past year, he played at Irwin County, we don't hold that against him. He has fit in great with us. Coach Grantham handles our linebackers. Of course, Doc Swafford's back there, he's been there forever, he keeps our guys on the field and does all that. Coach Smith, who played here and came back home and coached our quarterbacks. Coach Ursberger, who finally joined us this year, and the office coordinator, did a tremendous job. Coach Shook, played here, played at Jordan Southern, not a more intense guy in the world than Coach Shook, but, boy, his guys play hard, I mean, really hard. Coach Vest, our special teams coordinator. Coach Leckie, coaches ninth grade, but let me tell you, that guy, every day, he sits at his desk, and he doesn't leave until five or six o'clock, especially right now during the recruiting season, he's our recruiting coordinator too. And you talk about putting time in, trying to help our seniors find places to go play college ball, they'll sign in a couple of weeks, we'll have eight or nine guys signed, which is really rare in this transfer portal era, and a lot of that is because of Coach Leckie. Coach Wilders beside him, who's also head soccer coach. Coach Brown, who I coached a long time ago, and we stole him from Badaosta, does a tremendous job with our DBs. Coach Zack Coe, he might be kin to me. Coach is ninth grade. Coach Hutch, who's been here forever, handles our outside linebackers. Coach Granado in the back, our defense coordinator, led the number one defense in the whole state of Georgia regardless of classification. Woo! Yeah, really good job. Our starting D gave up 86 points in 15 football games, and we have one kid that weighed over 230 pounds on that defense, so that is a mighty, mighty feat. Coach Booth, who runs our strength and addition, not a better guy in the state. Is that everybody? Did I miss a coach?
Coach Stripp's at that meeting.
Uh, Coach Stripp's at the parent tennis meeting? Who? Okay, got everybody? And then this is a majority of our seniors. You know, I always say you win championships with good people, right? And, uh, these guys, I calculated our team GPA for first semester today, we had a 3.19 team GPA. I think we had 18 kids with a 4.0 or better. These guys are an example of what you can do when you put race aside, how much money you make aside, where you come from aside, and you do that right there, and you go for one common goal. We didn't have one bad day of practice. I gave out over 750 pound stickers from our teachers, and, I mean, we had lunchroom ladies emailing me saying, "Coach, give this guy a sticker, he's the most pleasant guy when he comes on lunchroom, he always speaks to me, or he always smiles," or whatever, you know? And so, you win with good people, we've got good young men, they're not perfect, I'm not perfect, but one thing they'll always be together is perfect, 15-0, and that'll never be taken from them. So, fellas, you deserve everything that you got right here, I'm proud of you, I love you. Thank you for coming tonight, and I appreciate all you guys.
I'd like to get a picture of the board members with the team. I have a proclamation here that the city has already approved by the city council, and our mayor approved with the city council, and then also our county commission. And Coach Coe came to the county commission meeting where they recognized the football team, and so this would be the third governmental agency. We had our city approve this proclamation, our county approved this proclamation, and now the school board. So, I'm going to read the proclamation, if you will, real quick, and then we'll get our pictures and finish our celebration. But the proclamation reads, "Honoring Coffee High School's 2023 State of Georgia Football Champions. Whereas the hard work, sacrifices, commitment, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2023 Coffee High School Football Team has enabled these student athletes to earn the first football state championship title for the Coffee High School. And whereas winning the 2023 Class 5A Georgia High School Association State Championship has brought honor to Coffee High School, the entire school system, and the city of Ambrose, Brockston, Douglas, Nichols, West Green, and Coffee County on the local, state, national level. And whereas bringing the first Coffee High School Football State Championship to our community is a great honor, the character of the football team, coaching staff, cheerleaders, band, and students exemplified a championship mentality throughout the year. And whereas our fans are simply the best, our fans have yelled "Defense, defense!" and "Go Trojans, go!" countless times. Coffee fans redefine road warriors by traveling in record numbers to support our mighty Coffee High Trojans throughout the state of Georgia. The fans' commitment and loyalty to our mighty Coffee High Trojans is unparalleled. Anytime and anywhere, our fans will be in the stands yelling and shaking their cans. And whereas the first 15-0 football season in school history, the first football team to be ranked number one in the state, the first football team to be nationally ranked, the first football team to win a football state championship, the first coaching staff to win a football championship, the first cheerleaders to cheer for a football championship, the first band to play our fight song for a football championship, and the first fans to cheer for a football championship team. And with 6.7 points allowed per game, our defense finished the season as the top defense in the state of Georgia regardless of classification, will forever be the golden standard moving forward, and being the first makes 2023 football team, coaches, band, cheerleaders, student body, motivated mothers, touchdown club, and fans legendary. And whereas Coffee County is a crawl community, our community believes in the crawl mentality and philosophy. Commitment is a daily responsibility to do my absolute best in every single facet of my life. My yes means yes. Respect is yes, sir, and no, sir, no, ma'am, and no, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Firm handshake and eye contact have taken many people a long way, it will do the same for me. Attitude, it's easy to be a complainer, takes zero ability, it is hard to be excellent without a great mindset. I will control my thoughts. Willingness, what will I give up? What will I put in my, put my body through? What kind of teammate will I be? I don't have to, I'm chosen to. Love, love is the greatest commandment of all. We see no color, we see no race, we see our brothers looking back at us, I am a brother's keeper. And whereas head coach Mike Coe, the entire coaching staff, team members, parents, faculty, the entire student body at Coffee High School and the Trojan Nation were interval apart in guiding the team through victory through their strong belief and unwavering support. Bottom line, we are Coffee, and now therefore we, the local governing authorities, the city of Douglas, Coffee County Commission, and the Coffee County Board of Education, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Coffee High School and the 2023 State Championship Football Team on its outstanding accomplishment, and declare January 4th as the mighty Coffee High Trojans Day. And witness whereof and on the separate signature page, the parties heretofore calls this agreement to be duly and properly executed by their duly authorized officials and their seals to be affixed heretofore, all by the authority of their respective governing boards, first duly given and all as of the date or dates indicated below. So, that's the proclamation board, can we get an approval on this proclamation?
So moved.
Alright, we've got a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Alright, alright, thank you. I think this says a lot, I don't know if there's much more I could say. Congratulations, I can tell you, it's a, it's a, it's a proud day, this has been a proud season in Coffee County, and thank you guys for your commitment.
I'll say one thing, Doc, and I, before I even heard Van say this, I mean, we hire coaches to win, obviously, but more impressive to me than 15-0 and state championship has been how he's hit the ground running, building relationships with his kids and the community. I can't remember us hiring a coach to come in and put more effort into that than he has. I mean, I've just, you know, sitting there observing last year even and this year, the relationships he's built and how he interacts with his kids, to me, that means as much as any of the wins, any of the hardware, any of that. And I do appreciate that part of your job.
Alright, any other comments? Well, thank you and appreciate all that y'all do, it's been a great, great season, and congratulations. Let's do it again.
Hold on, our attorney has to.
No, Mr. Wade said, "The night we won," that was the happiest day of his life. And there I, the voice of the Trojans, and we appreciate it.
I think we will do best if the board comes and stands with the team, it's a wider space than the team trying to stand here. If y'all would come sliding in the, in the middle of the team, we will.
I'm good, you're good.
I don't think it'll be in the way for them.
No, I think I'd be standing one.
I got a ladder.
Yes, come on.
Yep, I'll take it.
And, uh, this is really, I'll get back here about here.
Close that door.
One, two, three.
State champs!
Thank you.
That was great.
Thanks, guys.
Just label that there.
Probably can't, I think that would have been, that was my mistake.
The worst teacher type contract.
It's hard, I wish we followed.
Yes, sir.
You saw, you swung two?
It's hard, I wish we followed.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I need to get a signature before that.
Can I slide back running?
No, I got, I got.
Alright, Coach, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate it.
Alright, great job, Van. Hey, I gotta shake your hand too, right? These minutes were reviewed by the board at our work session. We also have the monthly financial report, which was reviewed by the board at the work session also. Purchase using E-Rate funds for Coffee High School and middle school wireless network devices, we have E-Rate West Green Network for new school, this is equipment that will be used in the new school at West Green, will be paid for using E-Rate. E-Rate also MIBs in AC, what does that mean again, Technology Director?
Network Access Control.
Network Access Control, alright.
MIBs, references to manual services.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Evans, alright? E-Rate system switches will also be purchased. Ambrose furniture, we're purchasing new classroom furniture for Ambrose Elementary School. Indian Creek Elementary School will be receiving, purchasing new classroom furniture, and the Ambrose furniture and Indian Creek furniture will be purchased using SER III funds, that's the American Recovery Act funding that we received through the State Department of Education, and that has been approved already by the State Department of Education. And then Coffee Middle School media furniture, we're purchasing that using L4 Georgia grant funding. And then a maintenance truck, we're purchasing, asking the board to approve, this is a, a used truck, but it is, meets our quality standards, and our transportation director has put forward this bid on, on the truck. And then a maintenance van from the maintenance department also, that was reviewed at the work session, and those two purchases, the truck and the van will be purchased using East Bloss funds. And then surplus property, we're surplusing some school buses that are no longer used, and they've been cannibalized for parks, and they're no use to us anymore. So, then we have a bus purchase, to purchase a, a 15-passenger bus using state funds and also East Bloss funds. Any questions about the consent agenda?
Got motion to approve the consent agenda? That's for now.
Second.
Call the favor?
Alright, and then the item number eight is the, the governor's one-time retention supplement that we discussed at the work session and talked about the, the fact that all employees will, including contracted custodians, will receive the $1,000 supplement that the governor put forth, and we will be funding locally some of the positions that are not covered under the governor's funding proposals. So, we're asking the board to approve that $1,000 retention supplement for all employees.
Explain how that's paid.
That will be paid.
Where it's taxed, or how it's getting paid, or why it's my way to pay it, or?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we, we are making payroll to all of our employees tomorrow, so everybody's payroll check will hit tomorrow, which is the 19th, alright? So, we're doing payroll a little bit early, and then we will come back and we will do an individual check, it's an electronic deposit, but that will occur on the 31st of January. And the reason we had to spread it out is we have one person who does the payroll for the entire school system, alright? And that person has to physically touch each person's record when they do payroll, and therefore, it's just a matter of having time to be able to process these individual, first the payroll payments that go out tomorrow, and then the $1,000 supplements that go out January 31st. So, it's just a matter of the ability to be able to process that. On top of that, we're currently doing W2s and, and 1099, so there's a, there's a multitude of things that have to be done in the business department and this capacity, and so we're getting it out as quick as we can get it out.
And the school system itself had to add roughly?
We are adding somewhere around $400,000 to be able to do the one-time supplement for all employees.
The point in all that is, we're getting it done as quick as we can, trying to get this money out of everybody.
That's right. And, and I did not want to make an announcement to all the employees until I had run this by the board and the board had taken a vote on it, alright?
Motion.
To approve the $1,000 retention supplement for all employees.
Got a motion. Come in, please. Second. Rest in, all in favor?
Alright, thank you. There'll be a lot of happy folks.
Before we get into any meeting, can you give us a update on West Green?
Yes, sir. The architect met at the site today with engineers, they were supposed to be meeting out there today. They were supposed to be meeting out there today with engineers to look at the site and to plan the construction of the facility in, in regards to how they're gonna keep parts of the building open during construction, and then, so they're just working out the details. But the plan, the first draft of the plans have been approved by the Department of Education. So the Georgia Department of Education has already approved the first set of plans, but then they have to go back and ask for approval after the engineers finish their, their work on it. So it's being planned, it's, it's, we're ready. We want to get it out the bid as soon as possible, but, so. Any other questions, concerns? All right, the, I would ask for an executive session to discuss personnel and, and...
Real estate.
Real estate. Well, we want to go back.
Hurry that bear one. Make sure. You motion?
Yeah.
Wade?
A second.
Second, Mr. Preston. All in favor?
All right. All right, we'll move to the executive session. All right.
Motion to execute the session. Congressman Wade, all in favor?
A second.
Mr. Wade.
Wade. All right, personnel recommendations.
Yes, sir. I presented you with the personnel list and the substitute list, and would ask the board to approve both lists.
We have motion to approve the personnel recommendations, including substitute list. Wade?
A second.
Preston, all in favor? Public comments?
There's no public comments.
There's public comments. We will adjourn, but while we do, I'll say something for them publicly, and I pretty much told everybody this, but I'll say it publicly for a reason, and that is that this will be my last term on Coffee County Board of Education. I will not be running for reelection, and if anybody needs a reason or wants a reason, it's simply that my family and I are in a different situation than we were 12, 16 years ago when we started this journey. I had young kids in the school system, and we lived and breathed Coffee County school system. Between school, extracurricular, sports, that's what we did. And I always knew that at some point, as my kids got older and they got in college, they're about to graduate now. And we sort of become detached from the school system. At some point, it would be, you know, probably prudent for me to step aside and maybe let somebody else come over here and do this job. I've enjoyed it, but it's not gonna be a better time for me to step aside than now. I had two things, me and Mr. Dowers talked about this earlier today, that I wanted to say before I stepped down. That was, number one, the school system was in a position that I wasn't worried about when I left. And I know the last couple of years, our school system is in a position that it's gonna move forward, it's gonna succeed with or without that a lot. And another thing was just to make sure there would be people out there that could step up when I step down and do this job and do a good job, and I feel like that's, that's, that's gonna happen as well. So it's not gonna be a better time for me to do this and step aside and, and, uh, I'm not gonna get too much into it. I just want to put that out publicly, because there will be people that are interested in this job, and it's only fair for them to have this out there so people know what my stance is, so they're not being bombarded with questions about what I'm doing. But I'm gonna be here for the rest of this year, so stick with me for a little while. But I just want to make that, put that out there so that will clear up any questions or, you know, misinformation about me. So like that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. And Mr. Dowers, once again, appreciate your service last year. State champ. All right. Well, I don't have anything. Thank you, board. Thank you, staff.